It's 5:33. I'm gonna call the meeting to order for our BCA meeting. Roll call.
Ah, sorry. I don't have my sheet looking. I'm so sorry. Miller?
Here.
Mick Alexander?
Here.
Deroni?
Here.
Howard?
Here.
She here?
Here.
Blackmore?
Thank you.
Yep.
I would like to ask for a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is the approval of the July 28th, 2025, meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Also moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is public comment for items not on the published agenda. Seeing none. I am going to... We're gonna continue the public hearing for case 2025-01, which is 30850 and 30900 Telegraph. And this is a continuation from July 28th, 2025. Is there anybody here to present on that case number? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing at 5:34.
First ask if there's any members of the public who would like to say anything.
Are there any members of the public that would like to say anything? Okay. Close public hearing. At 5:35. And do you like to say something?
Yes. Members of the BCA, I was in communication with the attorney, Richard Rassell, one day last week and late this afternoon. The dealings that are happening between Market Fresh, as you know, and the seller may be having some issues. He's not the representative attorney for the deal. So he was kind of in the dark, frankly. He is requesting that the application and this matter be tabled at this time. Tabling means that we don't know when we're bringing it back. So if something is postponed to a date certain, we know it's postponed to a date certain or adjourned, we can sometimes make it one meeting. The phrase "tabled" means it's gonna sit on a shelf. It may come off the shelf. It may never come off the shelf. We don't know. So you could make a motion to that effect or accept that they're not here and you take no action. But I would recommend you take the action of making a motion to table the application that's been presented and take no further action until which time it's taken off the table.
Did they say what the issues were?
They...he does not know. He does not know because he's not the attorney for that particular deal. I could tell you that Mr. Rassell felt very badly. Even if I had known earlier in the day or even Friday, it wouldn't have mattered because the public notice had already been given properly. So we couldn't change the time and agenda in case members of the public were here to address this. But he did feel very badly. The second he had certainty, he was calling me and we played phone tag most of the day today. So he extends his apology because he knows everyone is here early. He's a little frustrated, too, between us and this public record.
I can...I'll make a motion that we table this matter until the owners are ready to move forward in their presentation to council.
That'll be case 2025-01.
Thank you. I don't have that in front of me.
If I may, just so the BCA is aware that the Planning Commission is looking at your ordinance along with your planner and input from myself and my office as to a potential change in the zoning ordinance, looking at that corner and how hard it is to develop and what kind of developments you may be interested or not, and how to narrowly create the language to make it be in the village's best interest. And we're working on that. And so the Villa...your Planning Commission is looking at that now. And I think they looked at it at their last meeting and it was favorably received. It's been fine-tuned and tweaked even a little bit more. And then, as you know, once if they do make the recommendation to change the zoning ordinance, that comes back to the council to determine if that's appropriate and if you like the exact language of the ordinance and the potential use for that corner.
Mayor, you mentioned at the last meeting, right as the public hearing was being closed, you know, that considering a use variance or variances in general is, you know, something that needs to be considered extremely seriously.
Yes.
And I understand that, obviously. But is there anything else other than what you're referring to that we need to be considering in this case? That your...the Planning Commission's looking at it, the lawyers are looking at it. You're working on language to make it right so when it gets to council, I guess it can have a, you know, way to vote on it. Everybody's agreeing all the dealings has been done. I mean, is that the extent of kind of the comment you were making? Because I thought a lot about that.
We have a motion on the table. I would like to get a second.
Oh, gosh, you're right. We'd go back to that discussion.
We didn't have a motion and a second. We didn't have a vote yet.
That's it. Thank you. That's my fault. I apologize. But happy to come back to that if the chair allows.
Yes. We have a discussion next, so we might as well put that there. So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion about tabling? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Good job. Good job bringing us in. Our lawyers and their collaborate. Did I mean anything further by that? No, I did not. I think what's really important, since we do have time for discussion, in your role as BCA, when you make determinations... I'm not talking as much about interpreting language right now as I am about granting or denying a variance. The most important thing you can do is create a record as to why you're granting a variance or denying a variance, be it a use variance or a dimensional variance or any other kind of variance. And as we talked about briefly, you have the different elements in the ordinance. And this is true of state law, too, which is where this is all conferred, where you have to show practical difficulty. And practical difficulty has to contain all five parts or six parts. There's a five or six in your ordinance. Some have five, some have six. The state law has five. You have to be able to, as the applicant, show each and every one of those. But as a BCA member, if you were going to be making the motion to deny or grant a variance, is to articulate your findings and why you're making the motion for each and every decision you make. And then that has to be done consistently every single time so that if it's challenged in court... You know, an appeal is one thing, and that's okay. That's not the end of the world. But when you're actually sued because you were denied or granted, that's where this becomes gravely important to show that you're consistent on every single decision. And I have to tell you, it's challenging. And most boards frankly fail at that. And it's so important. And one of the things I've done for other clients that I'm gonna do for you guys as well, because I know you're somewhat new to the board and this board working together, I've laminated cards with highlighting of what these things are. So when you go to make your motion, it's very easy to say. You know, I find that this was not self-created. Let's say the topography of a certain parcel is such that they can't possibly work within the confines of the ordinance and still enjoy their property. And there's a fine line between enjoying your property and, you know, staying within the confines of the ordinance. So I'm gonna make one of...remind me? I'll make those and send them to you and have them laminated. And you keep them with you. And every time you make a motion, if you go through it, and it's laborious and it's a long record, but if you do it each and every time and you justify your motion and decision, you guys are gonna be in great shape.
That was extremely helpful.
Yeah. Good.
I agree. Yes. The more detailed, the better.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions? Since we have a little time regarding discussions like this, that if it's okay with the chair? Okay. If you want to work through that other case and we see how that goes?
Sure.
We have a little cheat sheet for practical.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, let's see it.
I don't know if we could see it in the back.
I'll send you much more of a crowd.
Yeah, could you put it back? Maybe later. We'll see.
We can move it after this.
Or you can put it up on the board, which is where I think it used to be.
And this is... This is straight out of your ordinance? Okay.
The next case is specifically a non-use variance. That's why I'm using this.
Is this mirrored out of your ordinance or is this paraphrased?
I want to say it's somewhat paraphrased because I wasn't around when those were.
Okay, so note to myself that I'm gonna...
These were inherited by the office.
If you don't mind, I'm just gonna take a picture of that, compare it to your ordinance and make sure we're doing the best we can. And if this is it, this is great. If it's not, we're gonna make it better.
As long as you're taking pictures.
Did you wanna...did you wanna pose? You guys are having weight. Oh, okay.
Because that's for a...that's more for a use variance that we had set up and then that one's for non-use. That's kind of like the cheat sheet we've used for the ZBA in the past so that you don't have to dig through the full text of the ordinance while sitting here.
Yeah, okay. That one, I think, is probably a little light.
Obviously, we're open to corrections because I know these boards have seen quite a few years now.
I don't want to say corrections. I just...I think every tool we have in our toolbox to make things as consistent and clear for every person in all situations is perfect. So thank you. I'll compare that and see if we're doing good.
Okay, so we are going to move on to case 2025-02, which is 30360 Bristol Lane. And we have the applicant that's here to do a presentation, so welcome. Name and address, please.
Thank you. Justin Zachoff. 60 Bristol Lane. I just hope it did not have to be the Guinea pig. We can go back to Market Square if you want.
Sorry.
So, yeah, I'm Justin Zachoff. My wife and I and our three boys, eight, six, and four, are looking forward to moving to the neighborhood imminently. We've been engaged in quite a lengthy renovation project of our house on Bristol Lane over the past 18 months or so. And we're starting to come down to the landscaping and that's the reason I'm here. So...and I'm not sure...stop me if you think I'm going too long or if I'm gonna try to go...
You've got time.
Okay.
I just need to have time for the public hearing.
Yeah.
And then our discussion.
Talk with us for an hour and a half.
No, 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 no. Go ahead.
So I assume the packets, my application packet is with everybody. So what I'm requesting is an enclosure around a raised garden bed. The raised gardens were approved previously by the Planning Commission last month or the month prior. And so what we're requesting is a six-foot enclosure. And I have pictures of the proposed material. It's black. It's PVC. It's very discreet, especially from a distance. The placement of it is behind the primary building setback, so it's beyond 100 feet from the street. It's beyond 25 feet from the side property line. And that's the gist of the request. I'll cover a few of the reasons why. Now, I'm not sure...I was following the application, so I'm not sure I answered 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. I think I followed the application of 1, 2, 3, 4. But I...I'll cover properties unique to the area. So this house that we renovated is built over 280 feet back from the street, nearly 300 feet from the street, where the setback line is 100 feet. And so the front yard is almost double the size of the rear yard. And so we are trying to...we're trying to take advantage as much as possible of the entire property. I put a picture of what the property looked like before. I gotta be very careful here because it was my aunt's house, so I don't want to say anything bad about it. It was a beautiful house before. We're just trying to improve it. But the property before was a, you know, the front yard was just...it was just all grass, very, very little landscaping. So we're getting a significant amount of landscaping. We're trying to do something, trying to be allowed to do something in the front yard that is other than just planting grass or putting it in a dog run. We don't have to put on a dog. So other than planting grass and landscaping, we're trying to take full advantage of the property. And I think this house is unique in that it is built so far back from the street. The garden proposed is similar to others in the area, including some in the front yard. I put a few sample pictures. Don't...I didn't put a lot of pictures. I'm not trying to...yes, ma'am.
I'm just...sorry to interrupt. Is his application packet online? I did not get it.
It's in the packet.
It is ZBD packet, that's right.
You know what? I copied the meeting. I didn't copy that. Okay, thank you. Sorry. I'm sorry, Justin. No, 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 Justin. Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, no problem. And sorry, it's my first ZBA application. So I put a couple pictures of other gardens that are enclosed in the front yard. Ours are gonna be similar. I didn't...there's a lot more of these in the village. I did not want to take a lot of pictures and, you know, put anything out there that shouldn't be, you know, in a public hearing. But we're gonna do something very similar. We're gonna skip the top wooden rail. So it should just be very, very minimal, especially once all the landscape gets installed. The search compliance will prevent a use for permitted purposes. Planning Commission has approved the ornamental raised garden beds. There's, as everyone I'm sure knows better than me, since I don't live here yet, there's numerous deer in the area. I'll say we had 65 trees delivered yesterday...I'm sorry, Thursday, and we've already had a deer nipping at them. I gotta get you my list of... That's just for the backyard, those trees. So the deer are everywhere. My wife, who couldn't make it tonight, is a big gardener. She would speak more to this, but it's a whole family affair, my kid's garden, canned tomatoes, all that stuff. And so I think that's a...not only...I'm not sure the legal terminology of a permitted purpose, but I think gardening is allowed in the village and it should be encouraged. I see my neighbors...that's how I've met some of my neighbors who garden in their enclosed garden beds. And so I think that's a quaintness that the village would appreciate. And so that's the...but unfortunately, here, I don't think you can garden without some sort of enclosure or...I'm not sure, 24-hour armed security. And this is not due to me. I'm told when...I have not gone back to the minutes or anything, but since this was my aunt's house, I'm told that when the house was first built, the rules at the time actually required it to be built in the same setback position of where it was previously, whereas now it's 100 feet. And so this was not her decision to build it 300 feet back from the street and it's certainly not nothing I did. So that's my general request. I'll...I could chime in more with thoughts, but I'll take questions.
Well, let me open the public hearing first.
Okay.
Oh, boy, I gotta go to the top. I guess I don't need to do this. It is...what time is it? 5:52. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to address this property?
Kathy Nagaman, 22671 Bingham Lane. I applaud the effort to do gardens. I have a whole problem with raised gardens. I'm rather interested in how many front yard gardens, raised gardens are along Bristol Lane because in the north part of Bingham Farms, I don't recall seeing any. And I know the Planning Commission already granted permission for the raised beds, so now we're talking about surrounds. And personally, I would not, unfortunately, agree with the Planning Commission's decision, but that was their decision. I would ask that the CBA seriously consider the impact of putting fences in the front yard, even around a garden bed. It's just, you know, how I feel about the village and the openness. And so I would just like you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on this? Has anybody submitted any written comments on this?
Nope.
I am going to close the public hearing at 5:54 PM. No more comments will be accepted from the public. And now we will have, at this point, council will have an opportunity to discuss. Sure. I would like to...yeah, if you could answer questions.
Yeah, we do.
I'd like to keep it, you know, somewhat general. We said the Planning Commission has already approved the garden beds. And so what's being looked at here is...I would like to be careful about the language we use. It's not technically a fence. It's a garden enclosure. And so Planning Commission has been very clear about that, that moving forward, we are working on possibly coming up with language to present to council that will include garden enclosures as opposed to fence. In the Planning Commission's mind, it's two very different things. So I think it's important to remember that a lot of people these days are wanting to garden and grow their own food and feel healthy and enjoy that hobby. And in this village, it's impossible if you don't somehow protect those plants. So I will open it up to comments.
There's a reason, and that is because it's not part of the character of the village. This is not a farming community. I don't understand, first of all, whether it's a garden fence or a dog run or a pool fence, it's a barrier. And this has been sort of a barrier-free community since its inception. So it's still a barrier. Call it whatever you want to call it. He's coming to us because we've not allowed it. And tell me, Justin, why aren't you using the backyard?
The backyard, if you look at the full landscape plan, is significantly smaller than the front yard.
But I'm looking...excuse me. If you looked at...this is your bed here. There's no dimension on that. What is the size of your bed? And that those numbers are too small. I can't read them.
The dimension is 48 by 22.
So it's a good-sized one. But it seems as though it would fit nicely in your backyard.
The reason for the front yard proposal is that there's really no other use for the front yard other than pure landscape. In our property, in the unique circumstances of our property, the backyard is significantly smaller than the front yard. The front yard is almost double the size of the backyard. And so we're trying to take full use and enjoyment of the entirety of the property rather than jamming all sorts of stuff in. Early on in the development of this plan, we had actually talked to Ken... If you notice, I have a basketball court in the backyard. We had talked about, okay, can I put a basketball court in the front yard? Can't. No, can't do that. There's a couple other things...you know, there's a couple other things and you can't do anything in the front yard, which is understandable to a degree. The only thing that you can do is put a dog run in the front yard. We don't have a dog. So we're requesting the ability to garden. And use...I think it's a...if you looked at the property and you look at the plan, I think it's a...it's less than 1% of the total square footage of the property. It's a reasonable size. It's in a nice location. The backyard also has a significant amount of trees that we're wanting to maintain and we're bringing trees. We certainly could be clear more stuff and work with the landscape plan to clear more of an area to garden in the backyard. I mean, that could be a possibility. I would hate to do that.
Is this plan accurate in terms of what you have now?
Yes.
So there's a large open area that is not treed. I guess in the other thing is to specify, 48 by 22 is big.
It's about 1,000 square feet, yes.
The other question is where does that end? You know, we have...we do have a lot of...we have master gardeners in our community. And their gardens are absolutely amazing. And they are all in the back. They have smaller gardens in the front, but the back, they're growing. We have a man who was president of the National Lily Society. He's done hybrid lilies. And he has deer fencing in the back, which is the soft fencing.
And is that permitted?
I don't know.
I'm asking you.
Yeah. Well, I don't know. But it's not in the front yard. It's in the backyard.
But there's some in the front yards as well.
No, it's not.
There are some in the porch.
But not in...
Not that one.
Not that one.
Not that one.
And we have to make a decision about the character of the village. And it's not, like I said, it's not a farming community. It was never intended to be since we've developed, since it's been developed. I guess I'm just curious is if this was so important to you, you didn't find a property where there was no question, you know, and now you want...
I can appreciate...I can appreciate finding property difficult, I'll tell you that. So, yeah, I wish I found one. Sure.
The other question, the other concern, Justin, that the decision we make today, and you touched on this, is that it's gonna open doors and people are gonna be pushing the limits. And if you can do that, then why can't I do this? And it just...it's concerning. It's concerning.
One comment that I would just ask for your consideration is is the fact that the proposal is still beyond the primary building setback. It's a significant distance away from the street. And yeah, if the house were built at that setback line, that is, there's no question, I would have had room and space in the backyard. I also would ask that if deer fencing itself is permissible even in the backyard, then I think I'm still here for this is based on my understanding is that no fencing is permissible in the village regardless of where it's located. And so that would have been helpful, honestly, to know earlier. You know, I mean, the backyard frankly is already...we just put 65 trees in the ground in the backyard. It would have been helpful to know early on from the village that, no, you can't have a fence garden in the front yard. You can have it in the backyard.
But you should...you should have noted, there aren't any.
There are. There's pictures.
I included two pictures.
Those are small areas. What's the measurement?
I didn't call it the proper.
Yeah. They're not 48 feet. They're smaller areas.
But, I mean, again, that's so subjective, like...
And my neighbor has them. They're from decades ago. And they're not doing anything with them, but they're still up. But they're in the backyard.
So if they're unsightly, because they're decades old, yet we have somebody who's dumped a very significant amount of money into this and gonna make it look very nice. I mean, if we're gonna talk about aesthetics...
We have time. Welcome to field trip.
I mean, again, you were told, there's no fencing.
Yeah.
But there's fencing everywhere in the village.
And this is the problem when you don't have any kind of oversight, is that things get done and they're not to code. And then you have to go back and say, you need to remove it.
Okay, that's a totally separate subject. We're talking about this property only.
This is what happens when you don't have oversight. So I appreciate you're doing it the right way.
I was...I've been in touch with Ken and the team from even before I bought the property on the rules, so...
So you knew what they were? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I always knew...well, actually, at first, I was told with the garden fencing that as long as I removed it, it was considered temporary. And I took it up and put it down, it would be permitted.
That's a question I have. So two questions. What's in our ordinances? I haven't...
I have it, I'm reading through the ordinance of, of, actually, not the ordinances, this is the site standards. There's nothing about front yard, backyard. So, doesn't matter where it is, we can't have fences other than pools and dog runs.
Right.
In my past, there was an issue with one person, and, and there was discussion around temporary in the past. And they had to take it down because it wasn't temporary. But I don't see any, I can't find anything in here around temporary, so am I missing something? Is there any language around temporary or not?
It's, it's a little bit wonky. Are you reading the code or the zoning ordinance?
This is the five-point-four.
You're reading the zoning ordinance, okay. So, if you go to the definition, this is the weird thing about that ordinance, there is the section you're reading that just says fencing is prohibited, et cetera. If you go back to definitions and look under definition of fence, that's where we get into the meat of it. Under the definition of what constitutes offense, it lists what things are excluded. And some of the things that are excluded are, I believe, garden enclosures and...
It says garden wall.
Garden wall.
It's not a fence.
I don't remember if it says anything about temporary in there, because I don't have it in my...
I can read it. "Any structure or man-made barrier comprised of any material other than vegetation with a generally open design and intended to enclose, screen, separate, mark the boundary of, or limit access to, all or part of an area of land. The term fence shall exclude any courtyard enclosure, garden wall, requirement trash receptacle enclosure, requiring mechanical equipment enclosure, required parking lot screening, or similar structure integral to the design of a dwelling or the site plan for a non-residential building that complies with all principal building setbacks, is approved by the planning commission and for which a permit has been issued." Well, that's worded interestingly. That's a fence.
So, garden enclosure is specifically...
It says courtyard enclosure, garden wall.
Wall, that word, wall. That's right.
And a wall...
I'd be happy to make it a six-foot brick wall. That's what we want. I'm just, I'm joking.
A wall is any structure, so it says, "A garden wall. A wall is any structure or man-made barrier comprised of any material other than vegetation with a generally solid design and intended to enclose, screen, separate, mark the boundary of, or limit access to, or all part of an area of land. The term wall shall exclude any courtyard enclosure, garden wall, or required trash receptacle enclosure." Same exact language.
Could this be considered courtyard enclosure? I'm just asking.
It's not adjacent to the house.
But I hear the garden wall, that a garden wall is okay.
A wall. I have a garden wall.
This wall is made out of some PVC-covered fencing.
This, this is why the planning commission went four hours. The, the language is...
So, that's my other question.
Right. We need more defined wall.
Yes.
Enclosure.
Correct.
Fence.
So, the language that we have in there today is, is interpretable and is hard to interpret, understand, to all of us sitting here, including a lawyer and a homeowner. And so, it's very difficult. And so, the question is, so, what are we, we here are deciding a variance from that which we can't fully comprehend.
Would you like me to offer some guidance?
Yep.
So, what you need to look at is this. So, you have the zoning ordinance that says fences are only permitted for invisible fencing, dog runs, and pools.
Pools.
Thank you. However, there are things that are not thought of as fences that may be permitted. And I agree, it is very, very subjective and confusing. So, what I would, if I were you, if I was a BZA member, I would focus on the five elements of practical difficulty. Is it difficult and impractical for this applicant to live within the confines of the limits of no fence unless it is those kinds of permitted fences? Is it practically difficult for him to live within this rulebook? So, you would go through, strict compliant with this rule, fences aren't allowed. Is it unnecessarily burdensome or unreasonable preventing him from using the property for this use? Is it unnecessarily unreasonable and burdensome? Those are subjective questions. If you answer that, no. No, it's not. You're done. You have to satisfy all five. Then you would go to the next one. Let's say you say yes. The variance will do substantial justice to the applicant and other property owners. Okay. So, if we say to him, you know, "It is too burdensome for you to live within the confines of this rulebook. This will do substantial justice to you. Are we willing for it to do substantial justice to other property owners?" And maybe other property owners like him would find this justice. And if you answer no, you don't think so, then you're done. And this is for each one of you to work out in your own mind. Number three, a lesser variance than requested will not give substantial relief to the applicant or be consistent with justice to other property owners. Oftentimes, when we look at a lesser variance, this is where, let's say, this is not true for this gentleman, but let's say, for instance, somebody wants to maybe put their property further in a setback, and they want a variance of X number of feet. When you look at that, what you then try to understand is, maybe you can't get relief in any other way. Like, let's say, maybe the way the house is shaped or the topography, maybe there's a hill, like this. That's where that would come into play. So, a lesser variance. I don't think he has a lesser choice, other than, in number three, can also live with conditions. We won't allow this variance, but we'll allow this variance because it seems lesser. All right. So, let's say you answer yes to that, you move on. You answer no to that, you're done. Right? Number four, the need for the variance, the need to live without the rule regarding the fence, is due to unique circumstances particular to this property. Is this property unique? Is the front yard just so big and the backyard so small that it renders him without choices?
But the front yard, backyard's not anywhere in here. So, front yard, backyard doesn't matter.
With the fence? Yeah. Nothing to do with it. And then, is it going to be applicable to other properties in the same zoning district? Can everyone come in and get the same variance? Or, do you find this ordinance, and this is where number four becomes important, do you find the ordinance so disfavorable that it's time to get a new ordinance? That's where number four comes in. Number five, the problem and resulting need for the variance has not been self-created by the applicant or their predecessors. Is this something that the person created just because of, of the day? Or, they don't have a choice in this? And then some of those other, a house was built up on the side of a hill, and now, in order to even modify the house a little bit, you need a variance, but you didn't self-create this problem, this is how the previous house was built. That's an example of how that one would come into play. So, because this is not clear, and even if it was clear, you still have to go through the exercise of the analysis of all five elements. Does that help?
Okay. I just, one, one thing, if you don't, if you don't mind, thank you, sir. For number four, the, the front, my, my, my best intention, you know, belief on the front yard distinction, is that this house, the front yard is significantly bigger.
I understand that. I completely understand that. I'm just looking for, from a, what are we supposed to do from a legal perspective? So, thank you for going through all of those, of what we have written, what's unclear, and then it becomes the desire and wants of the village, which we're here to advise and help.
Well, it's almost as though the ordinance would have to stay, that if your front yard is at least two-hundred feet from the road, then it's a consideration. I mean, you, you talked about being very specific about what you'll grant. If that's the stipulation, then anybody with less than a front yard of two-hundred feet can't have this. And we'd have to be able to substantiate that in, in a court if we were sued because of it.
And that's frankly up to the applicant. So, it's up to the applicants, and I'm not picking on you. I'm, I'm trying to guide you.
You're doing a good job, because you make an argument in my favor.
I could, I'd have a big conflict if you got the opinion. So, this is where it's his job to say, let me go through these five things and convince you. Let me persuade you of each one of these. Because a lot of this is subjective, and it's not always an objective measure. Sometimes it's, it's really easy. Sometimes it's not. And this one, I, I will agree, it's not. So, the applicant maybe wants to go through all five and give your best arguments and persuasion, now that you've heard what I've just said.
I interrupted Jesse McCallis.
Thanks. I, I'd like to make a few comments based on my thought process. First of all, Wacoon Bingo Farms, it sounds like, because it was your aunt, you know the village quite well, so that's nice. And it's really nice to see younger people wanting to live in L.A.'s mountains. So, let me make a few comments. First of all, we're, we're elected officials, and one of our primary duties is to uphold and enforce the ordinances. So, we can have a discussion about the ordinances. I'm not sure if it's perfectly appropriate here about what they mean or what they don't mean, but that's one of our primary jobs. By the way, I grew up with massive gardens. And my memories of it aren't all so good. I'm glad you're teaching your children, because we canned and froze, so that we could eat deer more. But I garden to this day because of it, and I enjoy it. But, but the premise of your argument, I, for me, is three-fold. First is deer. You know it, because you've already said it. The deer are going to eat everything you put out, including not just your garden, but your trees, your flowers, your landscape, and everything else. But, but that's the character of Bingo Farms. I would argue that there's other ways to repel the deer other than fence. I have a raised garden, nowhere near as big as yours, but we've planted plants around it that the deer don't like, so it deters them from getting to the stuff the deer do like. We use a non-toxic natural spray that the deer don't like the scent of, so, and, and you can wash it off of your vegetables and herbs and things that you're going to plant. So, that's one way to do it. We do it without a fence. It's not perfect, but it's, it's... The second premise was fairness. And I think it's really unfortunate that we're understanding tonight that there's others in the community that, that seem to have already put fences in place to protect their gardens. Maybe that's part of the argument, but the thing that's maybe missing from the argument is the people in the village that have been in your position right now, where the council, where the council has denied you the rights. And I do know that that's occurred on certain occasions, too. In occasions that I was questioning, why would they deny it, except they were trying to live up to the ordinance? The last one was the uniqueness of the property. I understand what you're saying. It's going to be hard to declare your property so unique that, in my mind, that it deserves a special variance. I think that people like me, I, I mean, I might now say, well, the front yard gets better sunlight at my house, my house sits back two-hundred and ten feet from the road, and I can put a fence around it, not to worry about the deer anymore. I probably won't do that, because I don't want to garden out front, I don't want to garden out back, where I could be in my pajamas if I wanted to. So, but, but it's going to cause people to consider doing that. So, I think all these things are things that I've thought through, knowing, again, that we took, we take a note to enforce the ordinances. So, I'm not sure how we would approve the variance request based on the way the ordinance is written. Now, we can have that discussion separately or now, but I, the other thing I thought of, you're planting a garden, and we're almost into the fall time of year, so you're probably not going to be planting a garden until springtime. So, I'm not even sure what the urgency of the request for approval is today. Lisa said something I wasn't aware of, there's already a study going on to make the ordinance clear. Maybe if we can wait, wait till that ordinance is clear, that we could have a conversation with you that might work well for you and work well for the village, to say, we're enforcing the ordinances as we've defined them. That's just an idea. But I, again, I don't, I don't know what the urgency is, if you're willing to consider that, or if the village council's willing to consider that.
I, I would just say, I have, I have contractors actively on site. That's, that's really, that's really the urgency. Can't, they're, they're finishing the backyard right now, trees in the ground, sprinklers on Wednesday, grass shortly thereafter, they're going to move on to the front yard, and, you know, the holiday grade out, the front yard is going to make a difference.
I think you've already, again, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like you've already got approval to, but I think the ordinance was under ornamental landscape features, something like that.
Yes, sir.
So, you didn't have to come to us for that approval, you've already got the approval to put it out front, I think.
Yes, sir.
So, I think the thing you're waiting on is approval, just to put the fencing around.
Right.
Which I don't think would be, again, it's up to you, it's your, it's your property.
Yeah, I mean, it's just I have contractors on site.
Anyway, those are my thoughts.
I appreciate those.
My feeling is, I looked at your backyard, and I have done canning on a half acre of property, up in Farwell, so I know what it's like to have a big plot of property to have to put in the freezer. Yours is going to be way more than what you need to feed your family.
Okay.
Way more than what you need. And so, I could see you doing perfectly well with half, if not even more, the size of that garden. So, have you considered the size that you're really requesting, which it, it stands out? It's, it's like a billboard.
Yeah, yes. I, I guess I would disagree that it stands out. It, it might look like it stands out when you look at an aerial view of it, but the area is less than one percent of the entire lot.
I understand that, but it's still big.
Right. Grass, I think, would stand out, a big empty spot would stand out more as, yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I laughed a little bit. My wife and I have talked in depth about the size of the garden. It started off as triple the size. And I said, Melinda, we're not...
Do you have a tractor?
Yeah. We don't have a tractor. We're not feeding in our, feeding in our, and so, this is about, with the raised garden beds, it's about the same size as we currently garden, the same plantable area. Don't tell my wife that this is for you to record it. It's slightly smaller. So, all of them is current planted.
I just have a problem with six-foot-tall black plastic fencing in the front yard. I would not want that in my yard or my neighbor's yard. And I, I always, I...
We, it's a, it's a, I'm sorry, it's a metal fencing.
It's not PVC?
It's coated black, so it doesn't look like a chain-link metal fence. It's coated black, so it, it really is, I put a picture of what it looks like from twenty feet away. It, it's nearly invisible from twenty feet away.
My biggest fear is opening opportunities for people to interpret issues. And, again, you know, we work very hard to keep this village the character that we've developed, and, which is why, I mean, we don't have houses for sale. We don't have, even the condos, we don't have any condos for sale. So, you know, it's, people like it the way it is. I think the message is, that they're sending is, we want to keep it that way. And this is not part of maintaining, I think, the character that we've developed. Just, again, my own opinion.
It's, I, I'll be honest, it's really, it's just, it's disappointing. It's just, it's really disappointing, more than anything, given that, I mean, we, we really thought this was, this was a non-issue, given the language of a garden wall, originally thinking it could be a temporary basis, fine, and then seeing even our, not to put anyone on the spot, but even our, some of our nearest neighbors having very similar enclosures. And so, it's just, it's disappointing to hear that.
Well, you know, go ahead.
Well, actually, the planning commission is, has already heard and discussed, and at least, at least once, right? And going through discussions about this, and somewhat to Eric's point of, that may solve and clarify things without needing to do a variance. I understand your timeliness of, of doing it, but there's also the interpretation of temporary, if things are removable and temporary, the, you can put up the, the beds are okayed and, and that, all the structures and everything, and if the, the only thing we're talking about is the... the PVC coated metal fencing, it's installed temporarily to be able to take down, if the planning commission doesn't clarify that it can or can't be done. And if they clarify that, yeah, all garden fencing has to come down.
Then it all comes down?
Then it all comes down, because that's what I do with mine. I have the same PVC fencing, four feet high around my garden, and I take all of it down every fall just because I don't want to see it in my yard.
And I'm here because the planning, the planner, I don't crack you if I'm wrong, but I believe the planner, there is no exception for temporary fencing. And so if that's, if you guys made an interpretation that temporary fencing's okay, I'm good.
Well, I think the neighborhoods have interpreted that maybe, and maybe that's where they came from.
I was going to say, yours would be, if this doesn't get approved, you will no longer have yours either.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right? And there will be no hockey rinks put up in the winter.
Well, you can have a hockey rink. You just can have the walls around it.
They all have walls.
No, they don't. No, they don't. The ones we put up do not have.
No.
Yeah, they're just slabs.
There's at least a small wall there.
No. What we do is, is we just, it's not a wall. It's about eight inches.
Who's "we"?
My son-in-law.
Okay, so I'm talking about other people other than you.
Yeah.
There are some that have full-on back glass.
Oh, yeah. You can spend thousands.
And not that. We have to tell those people no more.
Right. That's not punitive, Lisa. That's following the ordinances. You talk as though if we say no, then we're punishing people. No, we're observing what we have all lived with for almost 50 years in Bingham Farms. That's not punitive. That's respecting.
It depends who you're respecting. Are you respecting the new residents?
No, we're respecting the ordinances, the village.
Okay, so here's another thing to throw out. When people plant new trees, can they put fencing around those trees? So if somebody spends $100,000 on landscaping, can they put fencing around the trees so that the deer don't destroy them?
Until they grow. We're talking about it, I don't know. We have to make a decision. If you want to say no, say no!
It's temporary fencing. It's all temporary fencing.
Jesus.
To me, we're getting way, way off track in the weeds of what an ordinance may or may not look like in the future. I can tell you, back to the deer, the fences, everything else, I've never put them up because they're not aligned with the ordinance. I probably had to spend every year $2,000, $3,000 on treatments to try to keep the deer out of my yard. I still get the tomatoes eaten from time to time. We have probably redone the landscape in the 20 years we've been here four times to rip out the stuff that the deer eat and try to plant stuff that the deer won't eat. So this, this does have a big impact. It'll have a big impact on, which gets back to if we're working on ordinances, this is probably the right, I'm not sure it's the right discussion here. It's the right discussion somewhere as we work on ordinances. Because my temptation could be to fence off my entire property with fencing like that to keep the deer out of my property and to save me thousands and thousands of dollars a year in landscaping.
May I ask a question? How far the planning commission is in its discussion of looking at the fencing ordinance?
They're still discussing the language because at the most recent meeting, so this is, I've been meaning to find a good spot to chime in with this context for everybody here. They're still definitely in the discussion. There's no public hearing even set for this yet, mostly because we were trying to really get guidance from the planning commission for both our attorney and our planning consultant, for what exactly are we looking to change in the fencing ordinance, if anything. And right now, it seems like the planning commission's leaning more towards, we're not looking to allow property fencing, like permanent fencing, whether it's decorative or privacy or what have you. The consideration that's mostly being discussed is definitely clearing up and tidying up the definitions so that we don't have these vague terms that are difficult to interpret, which is why we're here right now, and to also tidy up the definitions and the guidance around things like garden enclosures, garden fencing, again, with the things that Lisa's referring to. If somebody had, because if we're saying absolutely no fencing of any kind, permanent, temporary, garden, non-garden, if we're saying none of it is allowed, that's fine, but that means that if Mr. Zakoff can't have it, that means people that already have put up front yard fencing can't have it. We've got to ask them to take it down. That means if somebody plants new tree saplings, they can't put up that temporary netting around it to protect it from deer. And if there are hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on landscaping, go down the drain because the deer eat those trees, well, village doesn't get new trees and they're out. You know, so those are the things that they're working on. So point is, they're still at least two months out from having an official public hearing.
So the reason I'm asking is generally is, it's the rule, I believe it's part of the zoning enabling act, but I cannot tell you the section. Once an applicant applies for a variance and if the variance is denied, you can't apply again for a year.
That's the concern.
So your point is really well taken. And just to throw out some thoughts and ideas is you may want to consider measuring of seven votes, do you think you have four yays or nays? And then you may want to consider maybe if you want to request tabling your application as you wait to see what happens with the zoning ordinance, as this trustee has pointed out, it may resolve your problem. Or not, but it may. And that's a call you would have to make unless you don't want to do that and then they'll have to go to a vote.
But whatever the planning commission decides, we would still have to review that and approve it.
Yes.
Correct. Planning commission does not approve or deny changes to the ordinance. They recommend them to the council to approve or deny.
If I may, then one of the things too that we're talking about here is all fencing. Well, let's divide it. What goes on in the backyard versus what goes on in the front yard. And I think that's one of the things that you were bringing up and I have seen. And that, to me, it's more, what do we see? We see front yards. We don't see backyards. We know that there are a number of hockey rinks that are in the backyard with fencing around them, I think. I haven't seen them. Obviously, swimming pools and so forth. That being the case, then maybe planning commission then has to think about, again, what goes on the front yard versus what goes on in the backyard. My biggest concern on this is we're putting a garden in the front yard. And just to kind of give you an idea of the size of this, you're a little over 1,000 square feet. This room is 406 square feet. I'm sorry, 408 square feet. It's more than twice the size of this room for the garden. That's...
That's big.
That's big. And I don't, and again, one of the other things we're talking about, temporary fencing versus regular fencing. And I think, again, I've put two trees in my front yard. I've got temporary fencing. Till they get tall enough, deer can't touch them, boom, that comes out. So maybe planning commission needs to then maybe really get into the minutia on this. Okay, if we're going to talk about fencing, okay, what kind of fencing and then where can that fencing be? My biggest concern is, and I see a couple of these things, and the problem resulting in variance has not, has not been self-created. It is self-created. The need for variance due to lights in the way, circumstances pertaining to the property. Well, as far as we're concerned, there's plenty of room in the backyard versus the front yard to put this in. Those are variance requested. Oh, we could make it smaller, but it's still in the front yard. Invariance due to substantial justice to the applicant and other property owners, that's, could go one way or the other. Circumstance to be unnecessary burden and unreasonable to prevent the owner from using the property, well, that could probably be a yes. But a couple of them, I would have to say it's been self-created and is it, a variance due to unique particular circumstances, I would have to vote no on both of those. So again, to give you an idea of where I am.
Let me just tell you from the planning commission, we did talk about front yard, backyard. Like this, this could be a year before this gets done, based on the conversations that were had at planning commission. So we talked about backyard, front yard. We talked about just no fences, you know, trying to more narrowly define garden enclosures, garden walls. All of this has been, I mean, we were talking for hours. And part of the problem is, you know, we want people to plant trees, like you're saying, put it in the backyard. Well, then he's going to cut trees down. And then people are going to be on you for cutting trees down. Like, you know, here you can plant the trees accordingly in the front yard so that there are trees, but they're not going to inhibit the garden. Or you go to the backyard and cut trees down. It's same as, you know, the fencing around. Like technically, you should be taking your fencing down, right? So do we want people to plant trees, plant, you know, all about the character of the nature, all of that? You can't do that here if you don't protect that. So anybody planting a tree who does not have a fence or some sort of enclosure around it, your tree is going to be decimated. And so if we allow that, and then the question is temporary, like we need to define temporary. So that's going to be a whole nother avenue. What's temporary? Is it two months, two weeks, six months?
Sounds to me like the planning commission's got a lot to do.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. This could be a year before this even comes before council.
Maybe this needs to be tabled then.
That would be up to the applicant. That's up to the applicant.
Even after a year, I don't think you're going to get the language that's going to encompass a thousand different variables that come into play on every distance, piece of property, front yard, backyard. It's just impossible to...
Right. And then somebody's on a corner, so then you can see their backyard. I mean, there's so many different avenues.
Is some, some discussion about dog runs are permissible? What's a definition of a dog run?
It's actually in there.
We have a definition of it, again.
Is this a dog run that we could call it?
I know that this is more square footage than what we allow for dog runs.
Yeah.
But I think I can have multiple dog runs.
Dog run.
I'd have to reread that to be sure.
You can break it up. Do multiple sections.
It does define it, that the dog run enclosures for containment of no more than two domestic animals are allowed, provided none violates the required setbacks or the property line, doesn't exceed 250 square foot in area, not more than four feet in height from grade.
So if this was a smaller thing with a four-foot fence, and you called it a dog run, it would be allowed?
If it were for no more than two dogs.
Zero.
Hey, I like who you're thinking, zero dogs, no more.
In anticipation of a potential dog.
We have dog showers, but it's...
That's tricking an ordinance.
I don't remember what the dog run ordinance says about front yard versus backyard either.
It doesn't say.
It doesn't?
Okay.
So again, I think, you know, you'll get to make the decision, but I do think that you see the complication of all of this. And if this is denied, we will be going through the village and making some people very, very, very unhappy. You see automatic fences, security fences, gates, all of that will go.
So that's a question. So number two is around justice to the applicant and other property owners. So if this variance, I can read it both ways. If this variance is approved, it's approving anybody to do a similar, I mean, his is specific to his property, his yard, his design. How does it apply his use?
Yeah.
And how does that apply to other property owners? And then the other side of that, which is if this is denied, it's denying his application for a variance for this reason, for his property. And I don't quite understand how this goes to other property owners.
It would only pertain to this.
But if we're going to say that we're upholding our ordinance to the strictest measure of the law, we will be going through the village and telling everybody to get rid of their fence.
But there's two sides of that argument. If that's the case, then the other side of the argument is we approve this and now everybody has fences wherever they want to be.
But that's what planning commission is looking at, trying, trying to thread the needle so that we don't have people putting chain link fences or any sort of fences all the way around the area. Which, by the way, we already have somebody who has a chain link fence around the front of their house in both areas.
I know, I know. I accept that it's really difficult. But until there's an ordinance that we can all say, this makes sense with the village, I don't see the wiggle room that allows us to approve something. And I can tell you, there's people that have had their variances denied that may be back wanting to do what they were not allowed to do. There's people that have been told in this village to take fences down and they took them down. That's happened before. What you're suggesting has happened before.
I'll take the record. I'll continue on.
You want to go? Move forward.
Yeah.
Instead of tabling it, you mean?
Yep.
Yes.
I'll ask you one more question. Is this already built, except for the metal?
We have the area set aside for it. And yes, we don't have the metal around. It's not finished.
But the fence posts are already...
Fence posts are in, yes.
Okay.
So you want, you want us to vote?
I've got to be honest, I'm not sure. Yes, sure. Yeah.
The cost is one year delay if you're denied.
There's no guarantee at the end of that year.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I, yeah. I'm here. This is maybe going on four months of talking to the different commissions about this, so. One quick question. Can this be interpreted as a garden wall?
You're looking at me to answer that? I cannot answer that. The BZA is the authority to interpret language.
Okay.
So that's their job to interpret whether or not this could be deemed a garden wall.
Because if it's a garden wall, then if, correct me if I'm wrong, if the zoning board interpreted it as a garden wall, then I wouldn't need a variance. Is that correct?
Garden walls are exempted under what a definition of a fence is and is not. So...
So garden wall's not considered a fence, so then I wouldn't need a variance for...
That's my understanding.
Fence shall exclude courtyard enclosure, garden wall requirement dress, et cetera. I do not believe the garden wall is defined, but wall is defined almost the same way as fence.
I think the biggest distinction we saw between the definition of wall and fence is that fence is something with a generally open design and wall with a generally closed design, meaning solid versus see-through. And even though that doesn't really have bearing on our ordinance, but in most ordinances of other municipalities that do have a definition for a garden wall, those definitions are usually restricted to a height of like no more than three feet when they define a garden wall. So again, that is not our definition because we don't have a specific garden wall definition. But as far as just distinction between wall and fence, the general, what our ordinance does say is wall is solid, fence is not.
In our subdivision, we have garden walls around our courtyards in our condominium homes. And one of the individuals was not going to put up that garden wall and they had to build the garden wall to conform to the design of, we have a certain color we could use, certain kind of roofing we could use, and we had to have...
How tall is the garden wall in the courtyard?
It's about three feet.
They're varying heights, but they are walls. They're solid. They're made out of the same brick that the houses are made out of.
So they might be over three feet?
Yeah. Ours is at least five feet.
I would suggest that there are similar communities to Bingham Farms that are, are unique compared to many other cities in Oakland County, McComb County. But you do have neighbors that are very similar, that I would encourage the planning commission when wrestling with fencing to look at what these other communities have done. Some have massaged them quite well to both support the openness and the attractiveness and everything that you're saying you want to maintain with these practical applications of gardens and deer and all that other stuff. I don't, I don't mean to be, I tend to have rose-colored glasses, but I can't see it taking more than four or five months.
I can't either.
At the most.
You should come to one of our planning commissions. We have talked and talked and we have looked at other, I think our planning brought other communities and we've looked and we've talked and...
You've just got to take the leap. Take the leap and in and on paper and then work it from there.
It should take about a month. Two months, okay.
It is hard. These things are hard.
It's very difficult.
But I think...
But you're right. If you don't, if you don't say, let's get something done by a certain day, it'll go forever.
And you just do the best you can. Nothing's ever perfect.
That's right. That's exactly right.
It's never perfect, which is why you have variances.
A young, new resident, some, maybe it's advice, maybe you take the advice or not, but maybe there's hope that in a few months, we can, like I said, resolve this. You're okay? The village is okay? Because we can say we're supporting our ordinances. Otherwise, we just get lost in all this stupid discussion. Otherwise, we just get lost in all this stupid discussion.
If there's no further talk, discussion about this case, I would like to either move forward, or have you take it off the table?
I mean, I gotta be honest, I think, I think I'll still take the vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, then, we need to go through all of those.
If, if someone is going to make a motion either way...
We need to go through all five of those.
Yes, you don't have to, you can just say that, someone make the motion, I'll help you out as you go. I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion concerning case 2025-02, which is 30360 Crystal Lake?
Make a motion to, to vote yes or no?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to vote to accept or not accept the use variance request.
You have to go through all five of them.
So, so you can't make, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the motion has to be, you can either move to approve because A, B, C, D, or you can move to deny because A, B, C, D, but that's my...
Correct.
Thank you.
But if we just say no to number one, we don't have to go through all five, correct?
Whoever's making the motion has to make their motion to either approve or deny following their own list of reasons, somebody else seconds that, and then, so let's say he says, as an example, somebody makes a motion to approve and lists their reasons why, somebody seconds that, the board votes, and whoever is opposed, whoever wants to say, no, I'm denying this variance request, just votes nay. And vice versa, if somebody makes a motion to deny, if you instead want to approve, you would vote nay on that. Does that make sense?
No, it doesn't to me, but if somebody, if somebody will make a motion, I'll go along.
If you can paraphrase that better as an attorney.
No, I, I understand, but the question is, if I were to make a motion to not approve the use request, and I only have one, item number one, as my main thing, do I have to go through and state that I have five different reasons for not approving it, or just one?
I see what you're asking, so, if you were, are you saying to deny or approve, so I know the example to say?
To deny.
So, I make a motion to deny the application for the variance, because I do not believe that the applicant has met his burden to show that he has practical difficulty, that this is not unnecessarily burdensome from him to use his property. I find that the variance will not do substantial justice to other property owners, et cetera. Is that making sense? So, you would say it in the negative for each one?
So, I have to go through each, all five, not just one of the five?
Yes.
See, that's not what I understood.
See, that seems like a burden.
Absolutely.
The good news is, your discussion, your discussion and the record that you've made have discussed all five of these, now you just gotta sum it up in a package.
That's a pretty complex motion.
It's not, you just take each one and kind of hit the main points of each one, and if you can, if you can say whichever one you're hanging your head on, if you can give a little more meat to it, and then say, nor do you find two, three, four, and five of the ordinance.
So, you don't have to disagree with all five to make the motion?
No.
Can't you just say that she's considered all five, and, but she sees, she sees number one is lacking, and therefore her motion is...
And why? And why is it lacking?
For that one.
For whichever one, right. And then if you also don't find the rest, you can say, I find that the applicant maybe has met number such and such, but I don't believe they have met number six, you know, whatever, one, two, four, and five, for this reason, and then give your reason. It's, it's sounding harder than it is, go for it, we'll work you through it.
So, it'd be like, I move to deny the requested motion, based on that it does not provide an unnecessary burden, burdensome or unreasonably prevent the owner from using his property for permitted use, that it will, okay, I'm not sure how to read, the variance will do substantial justice, that it will not do substantial justice?
Yeah, you would say in the opposite.
So, I have to read, justice to the applicant or other property owners, that the lesser variance will not give substantial relief to the applicant, or be consistent with justice to other property owners, well, the glare. The need for the variance due to circum, unique circumstances, peculiar to the property and not generally acceptable in the area, does not apply in this case, and the problem and resulting need for variance has not been self-created, but we believe it is self-created, and therefore denied.
Pretty good?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
You get a C.
You did it, Kathy.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I love roll call.
And is there further discussion on the motion?
Further discussion?
Or from the public?
Roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Mallor?
Approve of the motion.
Okay, Alexander?
No.
Deroni?
Wait a minute. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
The motion is to deny, are you supporting that?
Very confused.
Are you supporting...
If you're supporting denial, then both is yes.
We vote yes.
You're supporting denial?
I support the denial.
Deroni?
I support the denial.
Howard?
I support the denial.
Yes.
Hegeman?
I support it.
Blackburn?
No.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Just for everyone's knowledge and edification, if the, if there is an applicant that's denied, they have to wait a year unless they change the variance request. So, if, let's say, for instance, the applicant said, I'm gonna put this in the backyard, will you consider a variance for a fence in the backyard? That's a different application than this one, and the applicant would be allowed to do that.
Okay.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I need to step up for a quick second.
Yeah, in fact, I'm, they have their meetings...
So, I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Motion passes at 6:54 PM.